This conference will now be recorded.
If you're not speaking, it'd be great if you could put it in mute so we don't get that feedback. For the people from the public who are not on the council, I will open up after each agenda item except for obviously the public hearing. Any comments before we will take action? So if you do want to say something, just let me know. And then I'll need you to state your name and your address for the records and we'll go from there. So with that in mind, the first thing on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, changes, concerns with the agenda as presented? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Rick Seiler. We'll do a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the agenda passes 4-0. First thing on the agenda is, Mike, if you want to do a quick introduction before the public hearing?
Sure. Excuse me, what we have set up tonight is that the council has scheduled a public hearing here at 6 o'clock or shortly thereafter to receive any type of public input on the application that has been received from the QuickTrip Incorporated doing business as here, out on the east side of New Prague. It's QuickTrip, store number 1090 at 101 Chalupski Avenue Northeast. And what they have applied for is a 3.2% off sale malt liquor beer license. This is similar to the same type of license that was issued to their store on the west side of New Prague. The process we're going through tonight is exactly the same as we went through prior to the opening of their store on the west side. We have with us tonight as a rep from QuickTrip, Sidney Okoneski? Or is it Okoninski?
Okoneski. She liked the first shot.
All right. Or Ozzy, as you named her the last time she was before us. And then the other item that I need to make the council aware of is that we received an email yesterday that I forwarded on to you that was received from the owner of the daycare located across the street to the north. And so you should all have a copy of the email that she provided to us. And then you should also have in your packet the informational memo from Chief of Police Jim Garice in regards to the fact that he found that there were no disqualifiers and identified in the background investigation that he did for this license that would present, prevent the council from granting a liquor license. So Mayor, it would be appropriate for you to open up the public hearing and see if there is any other public comment other than that which I've shared with you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the meeting up for a public comment, the public hearing part of the meeting. If you'd like to make a comment, please state your name and address and make your comments to the council. So if anyone would like to make a public comment, the floor is open. Okay, it looks like at this time, we do not have any comments from the public.
Mayor, you do, you have the one email, even though.
Right, yes, the email on record that everyone's aware of, but no public comment has been made at the Zoom meeting. If there is no public comment, I guess I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I got a second by Rick Seiler. We'll take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the public hearing is closed. Now, if there's any questions or comments from any of the council members regarding this approval of the issuance of a 3.2? Go ahead, Bruce.
I just want to acknowledge Chantel's email and it is a thank her for her comments and concerns. She's a valued business, a business in your place. I do value that. I think her concerns are dealt with the distance issue from liquor sales and also the sales to minors. My, when doing my thinking on this, we've had this situation before as I remember years ago, Trailside Liquors was across the street on, from a daycare and we have Corset Win School, that's only west on the block away from. Simon, I always say Simon's Bar, I can't think of the name.
Checkers?
Checkers. So it's not like we haven't had this issue before and I'm not aware of any issues that have been occurred and there are, I believe, other situations, maybe in the market where there's daycare next to or close to a bar or off sale facility. So I'm not aware of any issues caused by that. I think this is consistent with our zoning to grant this. And the applicants have met qualifications and we do have the ability to monitor this through conditional use process or liquor licensing. And also obviously our law enforcement. So I support the granting of the liquor license.
And this is Maggie and I also wanted to say that I don't believe we have any city ordinances that would not allow the sale within a certain distance of a daycare facility. And Bruce, to your point as well, I know that our law enforcement will go in and spot check the establishments to ensure that there are no sales to.
Okay. Rick, would you like to make any comments or?
No, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, so I have a motion by Rick Seiler. I will second it to approve the liquor 3.2 off sale liquor license. Is there any other questions or comments from any of the council members? If not, we'll start with a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the approval passes 4-0. Thank you, Sidney, for joining us.
Thanks, Sidney.
Thank you all. You guys have a nice night.
You too.
You too.
Okay, next on the agenda is Chris Cavett is here to kind of give us an update on where we sit regarding the Main Street project. So Chris, the floor is all yours.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Always like to do an audio check. Okay. Well, if you've been monitoring things, all the underground digging is now done. So all the underground utilities work is now done. They're in the process. Obviously, you may have seen that curb has gone in between Second Avenue and Third Avenue on the east side of the tracks. There'll be, over the next three weeks, it's going to be kind of look, it'll look kind of like a slow process because the way the concrete work has to happen. So you'll be seeing custom mainline concrete paving happening this week, some paving of the parking lane. And then they have to wait for things to cure. They'll be going to the west side of the tracks, working on curbing, more mainline, more parking, literally the kind of the same routine for about the next three weeks to complete all the concrete work. They'll be working obviously on sidewalks, coordinating that with installation of light bases and starting to get, working with the utility to finally start getting some lights up on that stretch. So you'll see things starting to look like they're coming together real quick here at the end. Even though you'll see that concrete work kind of going on a slow, slow process just because of the cure time that's needed. One thing to kind of a heads up or point out is the contractor did submit a request for a interim time extension. We had a substantial, interim substantial completion date for this fall of October. I think October 16th was the date. Because of the delay, Minna, there was a long delay on the word of the project, if you recall at the very beginning. It went about four weeks when we expected to take about a week to two weeks. And then about a month delay dealing with the railroad. They've only, they're only asking probably for about two weeks. So they expect to pretty much have everything wrapped up for this season. And the road open about November 1st. So not really unreasonable, but so that'll be something we'll be looking at at this point. I guess I don't see any reason why we wouldn't grant that time extension, so.
Is that going to require a change order then, Chris?
That's what I have to work through with the DOT. I just want to follow their procedure. We wouldn't necessarily have to do it on our end, but recognizing the extension, at least in writing, I want to make sure we handle it how Minna wants it handled, so.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments to Chris?
Chris, could you also provide the update on the west side of Highway 21?
Yeah, there is, there'll be a mill and overlay that takes place through that intersection of 21 and 19. There'll be a little bit of curb work to repair some damaged curb, a little bit of, I think a pet apron being replaced. And then they'll basically be doing a mill and overlay. And again, they expect to get to that here in about mid-October. So that should be about, the curb work will be a few days and then have some time to cure. And then the mill and overlay pretty much will take place in about a day. And that work will have, happen under traffic and there'll be some coordination and jockeying traffic through that intersection. It'll, it'll be messy for a little, for a short period of time while they're trying to do that, so.
So then Chris, at the end of this year, so if it's November 1st, they pretty much will have all the sidewalks and the road and everything. And even this mill and overlay from the west to basically the end of strike force or just by Wells Fargo, right?
That's correct.
Then starting next year, they would start at that point, everything west of that is done, they would just start moving east.
Correct. And I should remind everybody, obviously what you've seen this stretch of work, which basically was about three blocks, it did take a lot of time, but it is, was probably the most, well, it definitely was the most difficult portion of this project. In fact, the comment I was going to make is I don't think I've had a project where such three blocks were so difficult and just all the work that had to take place with all the railroad crossings, all the coordination. So when you look at three blocks done this year versus another about eight blocks that has to take place next year, it's significantly different work. So you'll see stuff happen a lot quicker next year, of course, it has to. And they'll have the ability to run multiple crews, in fact, at times. Again, which is stuff that we had anticipated as an option this year. And again, the contractor chose based on the contract not to take on a second, second crew this year.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Chris? Okay, if not, thank you, Chris, for the update and have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Next on the agenda, looks like Finance Director Patty Solhite is going to join us. And give us a proposal for some refunding or refinancing of some bonds.
Yes. So at closed up review, you have the materials for, from the city's financial advisor Baker and Tilly and the city's bond council Kennedy and Gravon that are needed to issue the GO bonds for 2020. The bonding to be undertaken is the refunding of improvement bonds from four debt issues for 2010, 12, and 13. And I gave you a little diagram below kind of to show you the different years and the sources and available funds and then the ending, what will be the ending bond issue. The refunding of these bonds, which reflects savings to the city and utilities, will result in a savings of approximately $165,000 and are estimated to result in a bond interest rate of about 0.85%. As Mike had mentioned before, Terry Heaton was unable to make the meeting. However, Doug Green has graciously decided that he was going to help me out and answer any questions that you might have while he gives an overview of the financial issues.
Okay, Doug, if you want to do your best impersonation of Terry Heaton, you go for it.
No, thank you. And I've never known Patty to need any help, but.
I guess you don't know Patty very well.
Anyway, it's good to see everyone. Mike, it's good to see you. So the purpose of the resolution in front of you this evening is simply to authorize the bond sale. It doesn't require the city to move forward with it. It just, it just sets the date and time of the sale for, let me get that, it's probably right in front of you, for October 19th at 6:00 PM. We'll come back to that because we probably won't sell the bonds on October 19th. But it also allows us and the city's bond council, Kennedy and Gray, just to move forward with the process, put together the preliminary official statement, work with the rating agency to get the rating updated. So that's, that's really just the simple purpose of the resolution in front of you. As Patty mentioned, solely refunding bonds and other purpose of refunding bonds is not just to lower interest rate, but you can also put money to use that the city's not making any, anything on their investments right now. So we might as well take some of that money and pay off bonds that are incurring incurring costs at higher interest rates. So that's also a good opportunity and the city is doing that as well. So over the next month, we will just continue to put together the preliminary official statement. And because of this low interest rate environment, as you can imagine, there's just a lot of refundings out there. It's about to save throughout the country. And for that reason, the credit rating agencies are very backed up, being Standard and Poor's, Moody's, and Fitch. The city uses Standard and Poor's and they are really struggling to keep up with the demand. And we can't go out to market, you can't sell these bonds without a credit rating. We need them to be, to be marketable. So we're kind of at their mercy in that sense. So while the resolution says October 19th at 6:00, well, we're going to sell the bonds on October 19th, realistically, we're going to need to come back to you at the next meeting and give you another plan of action. And we have flexibility in the process. It's just, this is really not a big deal from a, you know, from a process standpoint or from a marketing standpoint, we just have to make sure that the interest rates are lower on the day that we sell. So again, we'll come back to you at the next meeting and it could just be that we'll push out the sale two weeks. Or we might do another resolution that gives the mayor and city manager some flexibility to approve the bonds based on certain conditions. So again, lots of flexibility in the process. But this resolution just gives us authority to move forward.
Doug, this is Maggie Bass with the council. Thank you for that information. About what kind of a backlog are you seeing with Standard and Poor's? Are they giving any indication of how many weeks out they are?
They are five weeks out. We've had daily conversations with them. We're talking about bringing in people in from retirement. You know, not like, unlike a lot of organizations, they just try to find bodies that are qualified to do the work. So it's about five weeks out right now.
Thank you.
Hey Doug, this is Chuck. The maturity of these, the refinancing is not going to extend out the debt any farther than existing, correct?
That is, as far, yes, I'm almost positive. And if I'm wrong, Patty can correct me.
No, that's, that's correct.
And where did, Patty, where did the $425,000 come from, the cash?
So that was excess cash in those specific bond issue funds. And the reason we have the excess cash was, I don't know if you recall, but when we close a CIP project, we, if, whatever is left in that project goes to the debt service. And then we also have assessments that go into the the debt service. And a lot of times people prepay those.
Okay.
So we have that excess cash sitting there that we thought we're going to put to use as long as we're going to be refunding those issues.
And that cash has to be used against those bonds, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Do we want to add into this resolution any variance that you're going to need so that you got playroom when you get, when you do talk to them or?
Doug, can I answer that, that in response to that one? No, that we would come back with a, an amended resolution at the next meeting once we have a better idea what those dates are in consultation with Standard and Poor's.
Thank you, Mike.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I'm just curious. I see the all-in cost is about 1.26%. Do you have an idea what the actual bond rate is on the outstanding debt is for comparison?
It would be different for each bond issue, you know, because each one has a different repayment term. We could go through those. I don't think this debt service organization schedules in front of you have that. But that would be very easy to get to you. It's probably replacing coupons of 2, 3, 3.5%.
Okay. And just to piggyback on Chuck's comment, so on the individual bonds that we're repaying, the maturities of those individual bonds are not extending at all? Am I understanding that correctly? So each individual bond out there is not going to go longer like five years or something?
No.
Now, what's the call date on this new one?
I would, let's see, I can get it up for you in a second. I have to say, I'm pretty impressed with the level of detailed questions of this council. They know their bond stuff.
Well, it's a short bond, so I'm sure that, but I'm assuming you have a call, call date on it?
Right now, we are not going to put an early call on there. And one reason, again, not having been a part of this structuring discussions, but because the city's already using that cash, there's probably not going to be, there's not going to build up additional cash, you know, in that time period. So there won't be a lot of opportunity to, to pay these off unless you dip into other resources. But Patty, I'll let you answer that also.
I guess when I was talking with Terry about this, we didn't really discuss that at all. But again, the longest one was nine years and the other ones are pretty short if you look at the debt schedules for them. So I would have to say there probably wouldn't be one. Or if there would be, it'd be late, you know, much later.
Again, right now, the pre-selling report says that we're not planning on putting in an early call option. Now, even if you did, it depends on the market, you know, you'd have to spend anywhere between 4, 5 to 10 basis points, 0.05% to 0.1% each year. And so if the point is to get as much refunding them, to get as much savings as possible, it somewhat defeats the purpose. Unless you really think you're going to, going to to prepay them early.
So just to be clear then, so we have the ability to prepay these now, but we're giving up the prepayment ability for nine years then. And so even if we put a five-year call on it, we would still have to pay 0.1 per year? So 0.2%? That seems really high.
Well, it really depends on the market and it's each year. You know, I would say there's different rules of thumb for each year, the early call period. No, I mean, I would say each year could be five to 10 basis points. That would probably, 5 is 0.05%.
0.5. Well, I'm not going to quibble about it, but it's obviously nine years without being able to pay it off early. That's a long call period. That's longer than you normally have on other bonds, isn't it?
No.
Nine years?
Typically with like a 10-year, if you use your bonds for 10 years or 15 years, you'd have, you'd have about an eight-year call.
Okay. Thank you. I'm glad that you put the work together. I think it's a very good presentation. I think it's a good, a very good thing to do.
And I just think that Patty and Terry, I know, review these every year. You know, with their existing bonds. So you know, it's not like this is something that just came across their table. They, they review these every year and so Patty should be commended for that, so. Any other questions or comments for either Doug or Patty? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a resolution. I make a motion to pass a resolution providing the refunding obligation bonds.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other comments or questions at this time. Okay, we'll take a roll call. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so the pass is 4-0. Thank you, Doug, for your information and appreciate you coming on to the meeting.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Mike.
Okay.
Thanks, Doug.
Yep. Okay, next is number four. Mike, I assume you're going to do the introduction and then we'll get some of these gentlemen from the Scott County CDA people and over this project.
All right, it looks like we've got Paul Steinman here and then I see Julie hiding in the background that she will probably also win as well from Kennedy and Gravon. But I think Paul is here on behalf of, as I mentioned, the Scott County Community Development Agency, on behalf of Bill Jaffa, the executive director, and Adam Johnson, the finance director. So with that, I'll turn it over to the two of them and let them explain what they're looking for from both the city council and the HRA. And so I want to point out here at the beginning that as we go through all of the materials here for item number four, A, B, and C, they are essentially the same items that are on for the city's HRA meeting that follows this meeting, with the exception of a slight revision of a couple of small items in the resolution by the HRA. And so we're not intending to have any of these people stick around for the HRA meeting. And so if you have any questions or issues about this matter, I guess I'd encourage that to be done as part of the discussion we're doing here with the council, because that'll be a duplicate action by the HRA.
Okay, thanks for letting us know, Mike.
I'd turn that over to Paul then.
Okay, Paul?
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Paul Steinman with Baker Tilly, representing the Scott County CDA this evening. Julie Eddington is with me in that capacity. And we're the only two. Bill and Adam aren't, aren't on the, on the meeting. So they've turned it over to the professionals this evening. So I'd like to present something that is in some ways similar to what you, the action that you just took to move forward with refunding bonds of the city of New Prague. Just as the city of New Prague has potential savings in refunding bonds, so does the Scott County CDA. This particular issue which is before you today is a proposal to refund bonds that were originally issued in 2003 for the Phillips Square apartment project. bonds that were originally issued in 2003 for the Phillips Square Apartment Project. They were originally issued in '03 and then refunded once already in 2010. And today, the Scott County CDA is proposing to refund these once more. They, they're currently outstanding in the amount of about $3.8 million. We built a little bit of flexibility in that number just so that we would have some flexibility on sale day. Up to 4.1 million. The, the refunding today suggests that there will be present value savings of about three, about $496,000. The savings would be spread throughout the life of this transaction. There are quite a few years remaining, 2036. So on average, that annual debt service savings today is projected to be about $35,000. So for the CDA to approve, to move forward with the refunding, a number of action items are required from a number of different governing bodies. The first is the CDA themselves. Last week, they approved moving forward with the refunding bonds. Scott County also needs to approve the continued use of their general obligation security on these bonds. That has not happened yet. They, they're waiting to, they would wait to see if New Prague wishes to move forward with these first. And then you folks, the city of New Prague and your HRA need to permit the continued use of the city's GO pledge for up to $3 million of the refunding bonds. That's unchanged from where it currently stands. And to continue the annual pledge of cash contribution by the HRA. Or I think some changes had occurred there where maybe the city will be making that pledge. But Julie can cover that. So again, the things that remain unchanged from the 2010 bonds are that you currently have a $3 million GO pledge. And you are currently pledging a cash contribution annually of $37,077. The, the annual cash contribution will change. If, if, if that wasn't to change, we wouldn't be here presenting this. We expect to see savings from the refunding and from those savings, we would propose a formula identical to what occurred in 2010 as a means of sharing in those savings. And that's shown in my reports on page, at the bottom of the first page. So currently for these 2010 issues, for the 2010 bonds, the, the HRA is contributing $37,077 annually. The CDA is contributing $21,569 annually. That's a 63.2% HRA slash city of New Prague and 36.8% CDA pro rata share. So when we actually know what the savings level is on sale day, we would propose again, a formula, a formula identical to what was agreed to in 2010, which is a pro rata sharing of the savings. And they're, they're in a pro rata reduction of the annual contribution that New Prague is currently putting into the project. My little table there illustrates what would happen with about a $550,000 cash flow savings that has annual average savings of about $34,500. And that means savings to the CDA of $12,711 and savings to the CDHRA of about $21,830. Again, that's savings, so that would be subtracted from what you are currently contributing annually in cash to this project. So the, these refunding bonds are structured identical to the 2010 bonds in that. There's no new cash that will be coming out of the deal. The term of the bonds is not supposed to change, so maturity date is the same. That's 2136. It is just a straight refunding done specifically for the purpose of achieving savings. The, the 2010 bonds, I actually, I heard your question, Sue, Mr. Green, my colleague. So I, I, I'm preempting a question here, but the, the average coupon on the 2010 bonds is three, 2.87 and now I can't remember what the average, I think it's 3.87 and you're trading that for our estimate of about 1.87%. So either way, a good, a good, a good interest rate that is generating significant savings. On our calendar of events here, so on September 8th last week, the CDA approved moving forward with the refundings. Today, we're at your council chambers asking for some resolutions, which Julie can go over for you. On October 6th, the county will approve or be asked to consider the resolution redoing its GO pledge. We'll, we'll close in late November and redeem bonds on February 1st. I should say too that I was organized enough to get on the Standard and Poor's rating calendar. So we are rating this deal on, on the 12th of October. And let's move to the last few pages, maybe the last page of my, of the letter that Mr. Jaffa sent to the city. And that saving, that, that is the, the debt service comparison page showing the net new debt service versus old, old debt service. And you'll see that the, starting with 59,000, again, these are estimates of savings and achieving an average here, an average savings level of about $35,000 a year through the remaining term, 2136. That's an overview with a few details sprinkled in. Maybe I'll turn it over to Julie and she can tell you the resolutions specifically that you're considering this evening and then we can stand for questions.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Go ahead, Julie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The, the city resolution talks about the fact that there will be approximately 3.83 million, excuse me, 3.8 million in bonds issued. And it's also asking the city to approve their GO in the amount of $3 million as you've done in the previous two deals. And then also approve the HRA to pledge an annual contribution. And if the HRA does not have the funds to do so, those would come from the city. And that, the maximum amount of that annual contribution is set right now at $37,077, which was the 2010 level. And as Paul has already mentioned, that would be decreased based on the debt service savings actually realized at sale time. So he's expecting it to be significantly reduced from the $37,000. And that is really all that the resolution says. It also approves both an indenture and an amendment to the joint powers agreement. The city and the HRA entered into a joint powers agreement with the CDA and the county back in the original deal in 2001. And it was amended when there was refunding bonds and we're amending it in the exact same way for this year. So the amendment really only talks about including these refunding bonds into that JPA and talking about the annual contribution that will be made by the HRA. If there are any questions with respect to the city resolution, I can certainly answer those. Or I can tell you a little bit about the HRA resolution first if you want to wait for questions.
I know Scott's on, on the Zoom meeting. Scott, I assume you have gone over all the documents pertaining to this and are willing to give your blessing?
I'm willing to bless them and Julie's done a very nice job on the documents. So yes, that's, they're, they're blessable at this point in time.
Yeah.
I'll just mention that the HRA resolution also approves the indenture and the J, the amendment to the JPA because they are parties to the, those two documents. And then it also approves the, the dollar amount of the bond issuance and that annual contribution that we've already talked about.
Okay. Patty, these savings, where would they show up? Just in our, they, they wouldn't show up in general fund savings. They would show up in our, our debt savings schedule?
Well, what we do each year is we go ahead and, that's part of the levy, the $37,077. So we'll just be levying less each year.
But that's part of that million dollars this year in the budget?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Is anyone, go ahead, Bruce.
I just feel I need to ask the question just because I'm on the City Council, but since the debt is lower, is there an opportunity to reduce the city's obligation, the $3 million, to the same pro rata percentage that the original deal was?
This is Julie Eddington. So the, the, the pledge has been $3 million for the, for the, for each bond issue. I will note that that's not something that the city has to levy each year. It's just a promise to pay if things, if something happens with the project and the CDA cannot pay, if the city cannot, if the CDA cannot pay debt service solely from revenues and the annual contribution from the HRA, then the county is asked to provide their GO pledge and provide money to the CDA. And then the city is, is then promising to pay the, the county back. And then further, the CDA then promises to pay both the city and the county back with surplus revenues over time. The, the, the GO pledge of the county has never been requested, nor has it been implemented. And so neither has the city GO pledge. And at this point, because the annual contributions from both the CDA and the city are being reduced due to debt service savings, it's, it appears that, that the revenues of the project are doing quite well and they are able to, to pay their debt service. So as we get out further and further, it's, it's less likely for a GO of the county or the city to be implemented for the project. And I'd ask Paul Steinman to weigh in on that as well.
Julie, I agree with, with your, with your comments. Maybe 10 years from now, when we go to refund these again, that number will be less than 3 million and, and, and then the city's obligation can be further reduced. It was a deal point that did come up in some conversation with the CDA, but in some ways, allowing this to, allowing the, these major issues to not have to be renegotiated allows us to get into the market quicker, to take advantage of the, of the low interest rate market. If we, if we reduce the city's GO obligation, then we'd be in conversation with the county about that. And it would be, it would be a different process. I assume, Julie, that we would be in conversation with the county about the city's GO if there was a reduction in the city's GO. Because the county has, the county would have to step up if something went upside down and then they would call on the city to reimburse and the city would only have to reimburse to, let's say, 2 million versus 3. Either way, it's a major deal point that, 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 you know, we propose that it remain as is.
Well, thanks for your answer. My previous life was a banker, so I'm very well aware of negotiations and renegotiating terms. But I think your answer as far as the, the speed that this needs to happen is a good answer. So, but I felt I had to ask the question anyway. Thank you.
Hey, Paul, I got a question, just a theoretical question. You're, you're stating that you already got on the docket with Standards and Poor's? Correct?
We did. We, we, we have a schedule with Standard and Poor's, yes, to rate, to rate the county's GO, yes.
Well, that's rating the counties, that's not rating the cities.
That's correct. So this, this, this bond will, will only be rated, formally rated by Standard and Poor's as a county general obligation, because that's the ultimate security for this deal is, is it goes all the way back to the county ultimately. So they're the only ones that will be rated as part of this deal.
I was just hoping we could piggyback from, you know, if you're doing it on the city and the county, I was kind of confused why we would have to do another rating for our refunding, but you've explained that it's only on the county level.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from any council member? So if not, Julie, I guess we need to do this in three steps would be the best way to handle it. The first one would be a resolution approving the pledge. Then the second amendment to the JPA. And then the third, the indenture of the trust. Is, is that fair?
Mr. Mayor, the city resolution has all of those items in the resolution to be approved.
Okay.
And so if, if you just adopt the city resolution, all of those items are already approved in that document. And that's the same for the HRA resolution as well.
Okay, but Mike was saying that there's some little minor detail changes in the HRA resolution? What would those be?
It's just the reverse that Julie, that when we went through and you did the red lines on both the HRA and the council resolutions, is that you, you've got wording changes that the HRA under the agreement with the Scott County CDA has the primary responsibility, but because they don't have any funding generating capabilities, that falls to the City Council. So what you're agreeing to do is you're picking up that responsibility under our resolution. Whereas in the HRA, the HRA is agreeing to do, enter into the same agreement with the Scott County CDA. And, and so it's just kind of the reverse of the terminology in, in a number of different spots. I don't think there was anything else major in there, Julie, was there?
There was not, no. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, let me clarify that a little bit, Mike. Are you saying that the only thing that needs to be done, or I think it was her, Julie, that said it, but it would be the resolution approving the pledge? Is that the, the only thing that needs to be approved then?
That's correct. I separately listed those items to make note of in the discussion that as Julie just highlighted here when she was talking, that both of those documents are included and approved as part of the resolution. I didn't want to have them get lost and not be noted. I also included only the first, I think it was six or seven page, pages of the indenture agreement, that it's a total of about 71 pages. And if anybody would like that, I can send it to them electronically. But I didn't think you necessarily wanted me to have printed that whole entire thing off for both the council and the HRA, so I didn't. But I'd be more than happy to send it to you electronically if you're looking for a little nighttime reading.
I would actually like it in writing. I would actually like it in writing. Okay, thank you, Mike, for the clarification and Julie and Paul. Does anyone else have any? Any council member have any other questions? Either for Julie, Paul, Mike, or even Scott?
No, thank you for clearing that for me. I'll make the resolution to approve the pledge of the general obligation of the city of New Prague, Minnesota to reimburse Scott County.
Okay, so they got a motion for the resolution by Rick Seiler? I guess I will second it, seconded by Chuck Nicolai. So if there's no other comments or questions, we'll take a roll call. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that resolution passes 5-0. Onto Scott County, right, Paul?
Very good. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you both for joining us today.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
All right. Scott, are you going to stick around?
Yeah, Mike wanted me to stay through the next item.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, I don't know if Mike or Patty's going to take this.
Patty, is she hiding?
She's there. She's just under the cloak of darkness. She's like a stealth bomber.
She's going to get you if you don't watch it, Chuck. You've been mouthing off for a while with her.
She's only got four more months.
I'm sure she can do a lot in four months.
Okay, Mike, I guess you're going to take this?
I will, Mayor. If recall, back in the first part of August, you authorized city staff to solicit requests for proposals for the insurance agent of record for the city's property casualty insurance for both the city and the utilities commission. Our purpose in doing that was to attempt to try and change the mechanism on how the city and the utilities commission pays a commission on our annual property casualty insurance, which historically has been a 10% commission on the total amount of premiums being paid. Number two, we were trying to change that 10% commission fee to an annual fixed fee commission so that we had some control over that on an annual basis. And then to, as part of this, look at changing the annual timing of the city and the utilities commission property casualty insurance to a calendar year renewal to align with our budget process. Right now, the utilities is in November, and I believe ours on the city side is in April. And then also finally to ask for a proposed commission fees for a five-year time period covering 2021, 2025. We advertised that RFP. And we received three proposals, one from our local insurance provider, Tupi Insurance of New Prague. Number two, the Nesbit Agency out of Farmington. And then the Arthur J Gallagher Risk Management Services out of Bloomington. On a couple pages behind, we have a summary of what that proposed commission that was submitted by those three entities for '21, '22, '23, '24, and '25. And that is included in your packet. Currently, for the year 2020, between the utilities and the commission, we are basically paying $22,588 annually. And as you can see from the summary that we put in, by going through this process, it appears that we will be able to obtain at a at a minimum at least a $10,000, slightly greater than $10,000 annual savings by going into this process. And you can see the difference between the two low quotes came from Tupi Insurance and the Nesbit Agency Gallagher Insurance as they submitted. They were the high of the two at about $86,000, so I kind of put them to the side. But the low pricing that was submitted was from the Nesbit Agency out of Farmington for five years at $12,000 or $60,000. In the case of the Tupi Insurance Agency, they started at 13,300 and went up $300 a year to where in the fifth year it was $14,500 for a total of $69,500. Or the difference between the two, as I show in my materials, is about $9,500 over the the two years. Patty and I reviewed the three proposals. We talked with representatives of all three firms regarding the length of the five-year proposal. Got a history of how long the agencies have been in business. Their experience in working with municipalities insured with the league and the insurance trust for the past 10 years. The qualifications of the staff of the agency, kind of the premium volume of insurance being handled, references and other cities being served, trying to make sure that any of the agencies that we would do business with are capable of handling insurance. And there there is no questions after reviewing all of those with the three entities that that's capable of of being handled. When you take a look at the the proposals, as we talk about, as I said, that all three of the agencies are able to provide the property casualty auto through the league insurance trust. And that besides the economic differences on the surface, there's two variables come into play between our two two low quotations. One, obviously, is that we've done business with the Tupi Insurance Agency, a local insurance business that has administered the city's insurance for the past 30 to 35 years. The second piece really had to do with the extent and the the scope of experience that while we are the primary municipal client of the Tupi Insurance Agency, they also do provide insurance for Heidelberg. Whereas the Nesbit Agency, they currently insure about 24 other city entities that includes EDAs, HRAs, and APAs and has significant experience working with the league insurance trust through all of those cities and and the league. A couple of our nearest cities would include Jordan and Savage that use Nesbit as their primary insurance agency. So when we try to narrow it down to to try to give you a recommendation, as you can see, the the five-year difference is about $9,500 or about 16% over those five years. The annual difference, I tried to show you what it was annually on how that $9,500 is split each year. Beginning at $1,300 here in 2021, going up to about $2,500 in 2025. And so when when you look at that, that difference of that $12,000 a year is a total of $60,000 for Tupi. It was the five years at 69,500. The expected savings under the Nesbit Agency versus what we are currently paying here in 2020 would result in approximately of just under a $53,000 in commission costs would be saved over the the next five years. In the case of the the Tupi proposal, we would save about $43,444 if you're comparing what the cost of each of the next five years is relative to what we're paying here in in 2020. But again, the bottom line is it comes back to that even though we've got that savings, we still have a cost differential as you look ahead. And so when you go to try to take a look at this is that it it puts us in a in a bit of a challenging position on on what to finally recommend. And Patty and I spent a lot of time debating and, you know, trying to take a look at this as to who we recommend that we align with and why. And obviously, it causes us some consternation, as you can see in the listing of our recommendations, that part of what we tried to look at was, you know, the qualifications, experience of the agencies that submitted the proposals and their capabilities, as well as the the cost difference. Scott's on and would tell you that although these are quotations, they are not hard and fast bids. But they are professional services that, assuming you make a selection tonight, we would enter into a professional services agreement for a specific agency to be our insurance agent of of record. So in boiling it down, number one, we're not recommending that we continue with the workers' compensation being handled by the insurance agent. We do a lot of the work and submit a lot of the information electronically to the league. And by not doing that directly, we think we can save just under $3,000 a year by having Patty and the finance staff do that directly with the league. So we're not recommending that we continue to do that with the insurance agency. And then comes the the challenge. And if we take a look at it, looking at trying to award the insurance proposal based on the economic submittals of what we were given by the two agencies, the low quote for services for the next five years was submitted by the Nesbit Agency. And based on their extensive experience with other municipal cities and JP entities and their extensive knowledge and involvement with the league, based on that combination of both the pricing and those elements, Patty and I arrived at, as challenging as it was, that we would recommend switching to the Nesbit Agency, even though they're located in Farmington, and that would take us away from a local insurance agent. Again, because most of that work is done with the use of technology and periodic updates. There's no question that currently with services being provided locally, that we have ease of access that when and if an issue does come up, that we're able to walk out to the site or have close contact for that. We don't believe that that poses a barrier if we were to make the switch. In the alternative, that the council felt that it was absolutely necessary and desirous on your part to keep the city's insurance agent of record as a local business, then you would need to take an action to select the Tupi Insurance Agency, recognizing that that decision's going to cost an extra $9,500 or 16% more over the next five years than what we could have gotten it done. So I think in the summary of what we've tried to provide you and the reasoning and the rationale, we're we're ready to recommend the Nesbit Agency, subject to your review comments and questions.
Mike, this is Maggie. Just to clarify that these commission rates are locked in for that five-year period. So they would be capped in the case of Nesbit at $12,000 a year.
That's correct, that we would enter into the professional services agreement that's attached that would incorporate their proposal in with that.
Thank you.
So I got one comment for for you guys too. First of all, Patty and Mike, thanks for doing all the due diligence on it. I mean, we're going to we're going to save with it. And then Maggie, thank you for bringing it up in the first place, not too long ago. So that's pretty much all I got.
So my 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 question's to Mike or Patty. Obviously, we're going to do workers' comp alone on our standalone standalone. Now, having an insurance agent of record, a lot of times you have that so that they can shop around for you every year. But it doesn't seem like we shop around because we've been with the League of Minnesota Trust for how many years?
Patty, it it's at least 20 or more years. And the the primary reason for that, Chuck, is where we're not shopping around for that insurance is that if you remember over the years, that involvement has resulted in the payment of Patty, what do you, are they called dividends?
I get, but my question is, so why do we feel we need to have an agent of record on our property and other insurances if all they're really doing is filing you know, a single report or something? They're not really going out and doing extra work for the city.
It's it's on the property casualty, and I believe Patty as well, the auto's in there?
Correct.
That that in that is that we have to, the league requires that.
Okay, well, that's that's fine. That's that's the answer.
They work with us and we prepare the renewals every year. So we go through all the schedules and the property and everything that we have to make sure that that's all covered. We take a look at whether there could be changes in any of the deductibles. When we add or deduct vehicles or heavy equipment going on and off the schedules, we typically work back through the insurance agent. If we have a claim, we collect the information, typically try to work through our local agent that then gets that submitted into the League of Minnesota City's Insurance Trust. And then we have a, they appoint an adjuster to the process. So no, they do require us to work and have an agent of record.
Okay, that's fine. That's that's that was the answer. The second thing is, how are we going to do the getting everything aligned to a calendar? Are we going to do a short-term policy first from or are we going to do a long extended policy to get everything aligned into the calendar?
That discussion will occur with whoever ultimately gets appointed tonight, that we would take a look at what do we have to do that we talk, Patty talked with the league, and we have to work back through that with our agent of record to to make those changes. So I don't have that answer exactly for you tonight, Chuck, but that's who we would have to work with to begin to modify or change that. And again, that's a long-term goal and desire to try to get that to align up a little bit better with our budget timelines.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Bruce.
Mike, you mentioned consternation. I guess to me, this is really a painful situation. I usually feel that we should dance with the person that brought you. And by that, I mean the I feel that a local business should have the opportunity, not necessarily be given deals, but given the opportunity to bid, and if they're competitive, or even if they're closed, try to go with the local ones. Supports employment and property, pay property taxes, where someone in Farmington doesn't pay property taxes to the city. As I said, employment and supports our local economy, but I guess the question is, is this competitive or not to make that kind of difference in my mind? But 15% is a little hard to justify that there's value added by going with the local, even though I I think I would and a lot of others would rather try to steer it towards local business if we can. But what I'm hearing staff say is that there's not enough value added from a local business to justify that extra 15%. And I don't want to am I, that's kind of what I'm getting. Is that correct?
I'll say yes.
Okay. Well, I I I do appreciate the long-term business. I do think it's a kind of a painful situation to recommend to not recommend Tupi, but I understand where we're at. And it's too bad where we're at, but it's a significant savings to the city. And we do do, I've been on both sides of this, losing business with the city, and that's just the way it works. But at least we're giving the local businesses the opportunity to bid, and I appreciate the effort that was made and and the lot, the work that staff put into this.
Karen?
Well, as we mentioned back in August when we did this, is that this has not seen the light of day ever. And as you take a look at the difference in the pricing, going from paying insurance based on the aggregate amount of premiums paid versus getting to a fixed amount, we now have greater control of what that is, and that it will be a fixed amount per the contractual arrangement versus just a 10% commission on whatever the premiums are. And if you remember, we kind of went over that when we did that back in August, of how that's changed over the years, and hasn't necessarily reflected any additional benefits or work being done for that being based on the commission being based on the total premium. And as you can see, by by going out in this process, it has it has produced, at a minimum, between the two low quotes, at at least a minimum of $10,000 in savings, you know, right off the bat, versus what it's going to be over the five-year time period.
And they can make another bid in five years from now, so I, too, feel the same way that Bruce was just saying. It'd be nice to give the business the Tupi, but the savings is 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 large enough, and hopefully on the five years from now, he'll bid on it again and be closer in, so we can pick him, so.
Any other comments? I guess before I make a motion, there's a caller in. I don't know if they want to make a comment on this topic. Okay, I guess not. So I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the move to Nesbit Agencies?
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Maggie. And Rick, did you second that?
Yep.
And second by Rick Seiler. So if there's no other comments, questions, okay, we'll go by roll call. Maggie?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Bruce? Bruce, you said aye? Oh, I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
And Chuck says no, so it passes three to one. Okay, thank you, Patty and Mike, for that due diligence. So now, Ken, I guess we're to the back sheet. Does that mean it's all you?
Yeah, I think I'm taking item six here. All right, so CARES Act funding, Patty and I actually worked hand-in-hand on this along with Mike, so Patty wants to chime in, she certainly can at any point, but give you a little background on the CARES Act funding. So we actually did receive our allotment of 606,941 in CARES Act funding back on July 28th. And if the council will recall, there are a bunch of elements, three to be exact, that are eligible to utilize this funding. One is necessary expenditures related to public health emergency, related to COVID-19. Number two is that those expenditures were to not be accounted for in our current budget. That was most recently approved as of March 27th, when the CARES Act was enacted. Then finally, they can only cover costs during the period of March 1 to 20, or March 1 to November 15th of 2020. One thing the council has already approved was back on July 20th, the establishment of the CARES Act dollars to be used for the business funds that were actually in the process of actually getting out to a number of businesses in town for their financial support. And in addition to that, one of you, that still left us with about $392,941 that we needed to determine what we were going to do with those CARES Act dollars. What staff is proposing is to use that allotment of 392,941 as for our public safety wages, specifically for the time period of April 4th through September 19th. And the reason we picked that date for the public safety expenditures was that that was a time period during which schedules for the police department had been altered due to COVID-19 and some other activities that were ongoing during that time. One thing you might be asking is, wait a minute, we had public safety dollars budgeted for in our 2020 budget, and that is true. However, federal and state guidance on the CARES funding notes that specifically payroll expenses for public safety staff who services are substantially dedicated to mitigating or responding to COVID-19 can be used for this, and it also further noted that it is presumed that police payroll is dedicated to COVID-19 response during this time. And in the case of New Prague, as I mentioned, we did have the modification of the schedules from that April 4th to September 19th timeframe. The police department also has been kind of our lead, including the police chief, in the development of the pandemic response plan and serving at our point of contact for pandemic-related activities, hence the monthly updates that we also have at the end of every council meeting agenda. So really, for ease of of taking care of the paperwork and to avoid going through the lengthy process of itemizing a number of different items that could be utilized by the CARES Act money, we're proposing to have the council authorize what we already had for the EDA program, and then this other portion of 392,941 for the public safety allotment. Now, the big question, obviously, that the council will have from this is, what are you going to do with the rest of that money, potentially to backfill? We still do have needs of personal protective equipment and a number of other costs that we've discussed, a little bit about videoing our council meetings, providing live link, and people can attend from home, a number of other protective items within City Hall, and even our computer expenses for the laptops that staff obtained. We believe items like that are certainly related to COVID-19, and we would like to explore with the council in a workshop, probably in the near future, the what we are basically considering the backfilling of 392,941 with these items that will specifically continue to provide a healthy environment for both employees and customers, and continuation of our fundamental public services. So we don't have the list for all those items. We're still working on that, waiting for some quotes to come in on on things, but at this point, for ease of administration, to use up the CARES Act allotment, we've got that chart on the second page of the memo showing how we'd like to handle those commitments for the dollars, and then have further discussion with the council on these other items at a future date. And if I missed anything, or Mike, feel free to chime in, but go ahead, Chuck.
So what you're saying is, is this is just what we're going to report to the government? That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to spend that 392?
Correct.
To payroll? I mean, is if they don't come back for an audit, and they say, well, how come all of a sudden you spent it on this, this, and this?
And that's what the federal guidance and the League of Minnesota Cities, Patty and I have been on multiple sessions with this. Many other cities are approaching it this way, just due to the administrative headache that it would be to track individual items, you know, down to the level of detail of, you know, these barriers at golf courses, barriers at City Hall, barriers at police department, that type of thing. So just easier to do it this way is what we're proposing, and not to lessen the importance of those other items, but we'd like to have a workshop to go through those in greater detail. Again, noting that public safety, we have obviously had that in our budget to handle that, but we feel these other items are still very important to get done. We wanted to go through those with you in a greater detail. And one of the other items to bring up is the CARES Act funding requires items to be spent by or incurred by November 15th. A lot of these items, like the video equipment for city council chambers and stuff like that, would not be, we would not be able to expend that by the 15th. So doing it this way also allows us a little extra time to get these things done, and we'd still like to get them done by the end of the year, but it helps with that that issue as well.
So am I safe to say that if, in my golf board meeting tomorrow, they ask me that, are we going to get reimbursed for our CARES, for our COVID expenses? What would my answer be?
Chuck, I looked at some of the invoice, excuse me, I looked at some of the invoices that Kurt has given me, and, you know, as far as the barriers that they put up, that would be an item that could, that would be reimbursable. Other items he gave me were like food items, like bagged chips and ketchup packets, mustard packets, that kind of thing. I would have a hard time selling that as our, you know, that that was COVID-related, because you go anyplace and that, you see that there anyway. I did ask about the the tournament extra golf carts, and she said that, she said, it really, you really have to document why you think that that would be reimbursable, because she said, number one, they don't have to take golf carts out. Number two, she said, you are getting some money for those golf carts when they, when they take them out.
Right.
So she said it would have to be something that is passed and directed by the city council as a reimbursable item.
Okay. Because that's like $3,000 a month, you know, it may not be a lot for a lot of other departments, but for the golf course, you know, that's $15,000. But you know, I get, I get the the concept that, you know, you can sit and say, yes, this is a gray area, yes, this is not a gray area, and things like that, but, you know, it's just like saying that you're giving the police department, which we, as far as I know, have we expended, we have a calculation right now of how much extra we actually spent from our budget on police because of COVID?
Mayor, if I could answer, this isn't intending to identify additional monies that are being spent. This is the monies that were spent, and effectively, we're able to use that as the justification for getting the dollars that they've identified in that category. So all this simply does, for purposes of the CARES Act and the federal government, is by identifying these two sectors, we can satisfy the minimum requirements and the audit requirements, that we are spending those in areas or justifying that those can be allocated towards that. Then what happens, as Ken said, with the remainder that's left over, the council has greater autonomy in the decision-making process as to what we do with that, and we're not encumbered by all of the CARES Act requirements.
What's, where's the remaining money? Because you've got 606,000 allocated.
The the 392,941?
Right. All we're allocating that to the salaries in the police.
That that would come back into the city's general fund effectively.
To be used anywhere, then?
Correct. So it's like we have that amount of dollars to take a look at all of the specialty items that we're thinking about spending, but we don't have to play the the game of trying to ensure that each and every one of those items meets all of the categories under the CARES Act. We've taken the two simplest items that we can, justified the receipt of the CARES Act, it's been spent on these items, end of story, audit purposes, we're all done. Now the council and the city has the discretionary abilities, is okay for that $393,000, that's money effectively that ends up being in the, in addition to the general fund, subject to determining where you would allocate those dollars out to.
So we could buy a new fire truck with it?
If we wanted to.
Right, I mean, is, that's what I'm hearing, right? Is that we now have 392,000 extra in the general fund, because we got the CARES money, which we're allocating to these two topics, you know, the EDA and this, therefore, we can use it for anything at our discretion.
Well, I think if you, you know, we we started a list of items, Chuck, that are really primarily COVID-related. You know, I think Ken had mentioned a few of those, and some of the items, you know, especially the ones that where it will enable us to be able to have meetings upstairs again. We are looking at redoing some of the bathrooms, you know, so that we, everything is touchless.
Right, but that's
We're looking at the
But that's at the council's discretion, correct? If the council said, you know, we we've got our CARES money, we allocate it here, now we got 392,000, we can look at our budget session and say, God, we got 392,000 we can play with, we can lower property taxes, correct?
I don't think that's the intent of what we're, we're wanting that money to be for.
I would caution against that. We have very specific safety and health things we need to take care of, and I think that's the point of the workshop that we want to hold with you.
Yeah, but if if we've allocated the money to the police and that stuff, that money's gone, and it was savings, see, that's where I'm confused, it's 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 a savings of 392,000, correct?
Right, we're only recommending this for administrative simplicity. We could very easily, and I would recommend that we not take this spread or this, these two allotments and go back and itemize for you on things that we do feel are very, very important to still get done.
No, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, but it's, it's my understanding, it's now at the council's discretion how these things get done.
It would be, it would be.
And, you know, so you gotta be careful when you, when you're going to allocate this money and say, okay, now we've, we're done, we've got the money, we've met the federal guidelines, we're done, and now all of a sudden you've got this reserve of 392,000 because we used, we didn't have to use it for our police department. You you left it open for the council to say, hey, we don't have to use it, yeah, we can get a couple things, but it it may only be 100,000. So we got 292,000, that's a pretty big percentage on our budget.
Well, we didn't want to take any chances, Chuck, of not being able to complete and expend all of those funds by November 15th and have to give anything back either.
No, no, and I get it, but I I guess
And so there was
Leaving the door open, though, you know, if you're going to say that this is what we can do with this money, it's at the council's discretion, you got to remember that, you know, we can look at it that you can get, lower the budget and lower people's property taxes helps a lot of people that may have COVID issues, they lost their job and other things like that, so you can rationalize anything, is all I'm saying.
All we're attempting to do, in the best efforts, is to identify the two largest categories that will allow us to justify the receipt of the CARES Act funds and meet the federal requirements and to ensure that we can pass auditing.
Correct. Now we can pass, and so
You're trying to pass the resolution and then schedule a workshop so we can talk about this, right? I mean, Chuck, it's valid that what you're asking, but isn't that what the workshop is for, is to figure out what you're trying to ask right now?
Yeah, we knew we weren't going to get through that in one night with the whole group in this large of a meeting, and that's why we didn't include the list and know we need to review that with the council, just as if we had kept it on the, on on this level. But we knew a number of those projects were not going to be able to be finished by November, and so it didn't make any sense to try to put them on the list and not be able to finish it and have to give some of those monies back either. So we we tried to find the most expedient way to justify receipt of the monies, and then to work with the council to make appropriate determinations on where and and how those funds should be expended.
And and I I get that, and I totally agree, you never want to give money back to the federal government. That's that's
That was our intent.
Never give them authority on money.
My thing is, if we have a workshop and we come up with all the My thing is if we have a workshop and we come up with all the things we're going to spend the money on, that part would never be audited by, by the federal government.
It will not.
Because we're, we're telling them we're using him on these two items. And that's all we'd have to qualify for the federal audit if we got audited.
That's correct.
Then, then we have a workshop and we say, this is how, what we're going to use for the other things. And it can be 100,000, be 200,000, be 300,000, whatever it is, it doesn't matter, as long as we don't, as a council, don't spend more than what we have.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to understand, you know, the, the time because I get what we're doing, but I also see that you're leaving a window open that that money may be spent not really for COVID items, which is not really
All we can do is appeal to the council's good reasoning and judgment in making those financial decisions.
Workshop prior to the end of the year so that we can set our, our final levy in the month of December.
We, we didn't pick an actual date, Maggie. I'm going to try to work it around the budget workshops and see if we can't weave it into some of that because some of that could have a bearing on, on maybe what's in the budget and how we move forward on a number of different fronts. So
Yeah, it would be nice to get it done before we have to set the final levy, just because those dollars are available. My second question is, do we have to justify to the, to the Treasury Department, the actual dollars that, extra dollars that were spent by our police department for their COVID-related items?
You don't have to justify them other than the guidance shows that we have obviously had police department working during that time. We've noted in the resolution, the justification specifically as they did adjust their work schedules. They did put together the preparedness plan and have acted as our face of contact for COVID-19 response. So that is justification. And then the guidance said that it's presumed that even though they're budgeted, that it could be used for that. So that's basically the finding. Let's see here. Couple of the wherewithal is kind of go to that, that point. Basically, all the wherewithal is actually get to that point. We modeled this resolution after a model the league put out, which was based on the city of Austin that had done this a couple of months ago.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, just a little concerned that we'd have to actually come, come up with the actual dollars. And if they didn't match 392. So thanks for answering my question.
And Maggie, just to clarify, those are not extra dollars that were spent. Those just are dollars that were spent.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments? Bruce or Rick? Go ahead, Bruce.
I, I would prefer that we had this all organized on the list and it all matched up. I understand what, what's being attempted to do here. But I guess I just want to reiterate what Chuck is saying, that I, I think this is a good plan to assure that we use the money up. But I think, as you said, that the door is open. What we would be doing a workshop on, it has nothing to do with CARES Act really anymore. It's really revisiting the budget and seeing what adjustments to the budget we would want to make. So I, I do think that there's no guarantee what we're going to see, that money being used for, or even that it gets all spent on it. And, and that's just the way it will work as I understand it. So
Bruce, when you, when you and the council see this list, you will find things on the list there that none of these are contained in the proposed 21 budget at the present time.
Right. But we can also say that we don't want to do it or we want to do it. I mean, because now you're, you're leaving it up to our discretion. So it's really going to go hand in hand with the budget. I'm just saying that's how it's going to be interpreted.
It can and it may be, but all of the items that we were attempting to put together for the use of these monies, none of those are contained within the 21 budget. They're all separate distinct items that Ken was alluding to or trying to identify that are items that we're attempting to address as he talked about, you know, the, the health and the safety and dealing with COVID situations, i.e. from the technology or trying to set up to be able to hold meetings internally up in the council chambers while doing them electronically, trying to develop a system for that, the abilities to probably upgrade and replace our telephone system so that we can get ahold of people when they're offsite, in, in, in carrying out work out beyond that way, in trying to redo a number of the features or facets in any of the restrooms to go to touchless type items. So it, it's a listing of items that aren't currently in anybody's budget, but were attempted to be developed because we had this influx of federal dollars that could be brainstormed and used for items that we routinely didn't have in our budgets.
And they're related to COVID. That's the, the very specific thing I want to note. They're COVID, they're not just wishless things we've come up with. They're specifically due to COVID. So I don't want to lose sight of that.
Well, can't we just, when we make the resolution, add the 606 number in there? And then that would make it designated just for COVID response?
Well, 606,941 is our CARES money. That's what we got from the federal government. And we earmarked 214,000 to the EDA for small city grants. Now we have this 392 and, and they're, they're putting it for audit purposes, they're putting it onto the police and safety. Now, my question, Mike, you know, you have some ideas of things that you could spend that are not in the current budget. My question would be, is anything in our current budget, are we out of tilt because of COVID?
No.
You know, so we're actually sitting in pretty good position as a city because of the expenses are in line to what our budget are. You know, except for obviously this camera stuff or the bathrooms and things like that, whatever that comes out to be. But besides that, we haven't incurred any major COVID expenses in any departments over our existing budget.
We have some that are identified in that list, Chuck, that were the personal protective equipment and the hand sanitizers and in a number of things that are in there, but not an inordinate amount of dollars in there that would consume that 392,000. So yes, there will
Things you're saying, you know, are, you know, like hand sanitized PPs and things like that, you know, they're going to be in that 10,000 or 15,000 range total. It's not going to be
Correct. You're, you're on target. We, we did the three windows at the utilities, planning, planning and over at PD, I think that was collectively, Ken, what about a $3,000 expense due to redo that. So we have a number of those type of small items per se, but it still leaves a rather significant amount of dollars that because it's federal dollars coming to us, it gives the council some freedom and flexibility to decide what to choose to spend that on.
I got it.
So we, we tried to make it as easy as we could that we comply and then move on and decide, okay, how do we want to spend it without being pressed up against the November 15 timeframe and having any worries there that we would have to send any money back?
So no, I totally understand. And, and it makes sense to me, but I'm just saying, it also is going to be reviewed as we got 392,000 of money that can be used for non-COVID things also, because we said we're using it for COVID-related expenses for the two things that require us to do. So any other questions, comments? Okay. If not, I guess I'll make a motion to a resolution to accept the allocation of the CARES funds.
Second.
Got a second by Bruce Wolf. If there's another, other comments or questions, we'll take a roll call. Maggie?
Hi.
Rick?
Sorry.
Uh, Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes 4-0. Thank you. My Google's talking to me. Technology, I love it. Uh, Mike, are you taking the tobacco item number seven?
I will.
The ordinance that you have in front of you is the same ordinance that the council introduced on July 20. If you recall, we had to provide 30 days notice to all of our tobacco license holders, which we did. And as part of that process, we had the ordinance scheduled for council consideration and adoption here on the 21st of September. So what you're seeing in front of you tonight is the same ordinance that you saw in July 20. And it's basically in position for final adoption.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding this? This basically, my understanding puts us in line with both the federal and state laws, which we're kind of required to do.
We'll move.
So if there's no other questions, I got a, a motion by Rick Seiler.
I'll second. Go ahead, Bruce.
I got a second by Bruce Wolf. There's no other comments or questions. We'll take a roll call vote. Maggie Bass?
Aye.
Rick Seiler?
Aye.
Bruce Wolf?
Aye.
And Chuck Nicolai says aye, so it passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Okay, Ken, it looks like it's zoning time.
All right. I'll be showing you a lot of things on the screen here from here on out. And item number one we'll start with is the, these are all related, the next items, A through D, by the way, related to the plat of Tekolski Estates. And first item is the annexation of Tekolski Estates. On the screen in front of everybody, we've got the land outlined in gray here, which is, excuse me, a little bit over a 35 acre piece of land that is petitioned to be brought into the city limits. If you recall, and we'll go over this with the next agenda item, but the plat of Tekolski Estates was a little over 72 acres and was this area I'm outlining with the pointer here on the screen. The south 35 acres was not yet in the city limits and actually is an area that specifically that contains the two lots that are being planted at this point. Um, you had a little background on our orderly annexation agreement of Lanesford Township. We actually had our 1978 agreement terminated back in 2019 upon mutual agreement with the township. And that was when we did the Belzer annexation. And at that point, we agreed that we would enter into new orderly annexation agreements or simply annexed by ordinance when we had annexations in the future. So we've continued the same language from that agreement and developed a new one with the assistance of Scott Riggs and attorneys in his office. And I attended the meeting of Lanesford Township on September 15th last Tuesday. And they did approve the joint resolution that is included in the packet here. Their main point of discussion and I actually had a discussion before the meeting, but they wanted to make sure that we had a five-year tax phase in for this property so that they'll get a five-year payback, which totals about $1,176.72. We had a much bigger phase in for the Belzer property, but being a, this is majority farmland and just the one home. So that's how that calculated out. They were in agreement. And like I said, the, the agreement is attached. It's a joint resolution. Township's already approved it. And we would look for your consideration of that joint resolution tonight. And if approved tonight, it would be forwarded to the Office of Boundary Adjustments for the State of Minnesota. And we would expect it to be filed within about a month where they would put it on their docket and have the review completed and finalized.
So is the 1,176 roughly what the tax revenue is on that piece of property right now?
No. So what we do for the tax phase in is over the five-year time period, year one, which would be 2021 taxes in this case, would be 100% of the tax. So it would normally generate at the township level. And then you take 20% off each year. So that $1,100 is just the total. And if you look on page three of the joint resolution, you can see how that phases out over that time. And again, just the township portion, we're talking here that we're reimbursing back. Once we annex, we'll have a, a city portion as well, but we'll just kind of like rebating back the township taxes until we phase it out over that five-year time period.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. If not, I don't know. We have two callers on. I'm not sure if they're here for anything regarding the Tekolski Estates, but if there's any comments that they may have. If not, doesn't look like it. So I guess I'll make a motion to approve the joint resolution.
I'll second.
I got a motion by Chuck Nicolai, second by Maggie Bass. This is for the joint resolution establishing a newer annexation agreement. So if there's no further questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Ruth?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes 4-0. Letter B.
All right. Letter B is the final plat resolution, or excuse me, rezoning. I got a agenda here. Rezoning of the property.
B is a rezoning, yep.
We'll put up the map here for the rezoning to refresh everybody's memory. So this was introduced to the council, this rezoning ordinance back on August 3rd of 2020. And again, the overall outline of the 72 approximate acres of Tekolski Estates is shown on the overhead here. So the area outlined in red is the land we were just talking about the annexation for. And per Landy's plan, which designated it as single-family residential, we are proposing, or the applicant's proposing to have that zoned RL90 single-family residential. And that is the request. So looking for the second reading and the adoption of the rezoning ordinance that would establish the newly annexed property as RL90 single-family residential.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ken regarding, this would be the second reading of this rezoning ordinance? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll move the second reading.
Okay. I got a motion by Rick Seiler.
I'll second. This is Maggie.
Okay. I got a second by Maggie Bass. So if there's no other comments.
Chuck, is this approval of the ordinance, adopting the ordinance?
This is the second reading, adopting the rezoning ordinance. Yes.
Okay. Second reading means adopting the ordinance. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay. If not, Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye. So the second reading has passed and the ordinance will be what? Posted now and be? What's the time?
We'll get that in the paper next Thursday, October?
October 1st?
October 1st. Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, resolution of grant approval of final plat.
Bear with me as I get loaded up another item here. All right. So for the final plat of Tekolski Estates here, again, Again, the applicant, Patricia Tokolski, and the revocable trust that she represents. This is actually an item, as I've noted, it's gone back for a couple of months. So we've been doing a review on various items. We have the two-lot and two-outlot plat again on that 72.58 acres of land. Council, if you remember back in August 3rd, when we introduced the rezoning ordinance, we had the preliminary plat that was approved by the council at that time. The preliminary plat had a few conditions that needed to be addressed in the preliminary plat, including adding some easement lines around the perimeter of the lots and those types of corrections. They made those corrections on the final plat per the requirements and conditions from the preliminary plat. And the planning commission reviewed at their August 26th planning commission meeting, the final plat, and they recommended approval on a 3 to 0 vote to forward that to the council with the findings and conditions listed in the staff report, which are obviously translated into the resolution that we have in front of you tonight to approve the final plat. But again, two lots are contained on the overhead here for the two lots that we're showing in red. The one lot, Lot 1, the southern lot, contains the existing home. Lot 2 contains the septic system. And one of the conditions of the final plat is that a development agreement be entered into between the city and the developer that will encumber the Lot 2 that has a septic system and a well on it. And you'll see the next item on the agenda is actually the development agreement that gets into those details, and we'll get into that more at that point. But again, two-lot plat that we've got here in front of you, they've got all the appropriate easements, they've got the appropriate right-of-way for Connor 2915 Street Southwest. That was approved by the Lister County Highway Engineer, First Avenue Right-of-Way. That's also a county road. Again, the Lister County Highway Engineer was in approval of how they are showing it on the final plat. So just a couple other things to note here. They have the wetlands drawn in as they're delineated as required, and a couple of other old easements for drain lines that run into the dip. So everything is covered appropriately in the final plat drawing. And again, these two pictures here are Lot 1, the existing home, and then Lot 2, which is the long home with the mound septic system on it. You can see kind of in the foreground of the yard in the photo there. And just a couple other photos from further to the west near the railroad track. But again, this plat is bound on the west side by the railroad. With that, the staff and the planning commission do recommend that the city council approve the enclosed resolution in the packet for the final plat of Tokolski Estates.
Okay, does anyone have a question or comment for Ken regarding this?
Ken, I should have asked this before, but if the mound and the house are in two separate lots, what's the advantage of having two lots and why not just keep it one lot?
The property owner, the developer, the family wants to keep the lot for future sale once city utilities are made available to the property, at which point that would become a buildable lot, and they could sell that at that point. So that was really the idea. They didn't want to sell off more than they needed to for that house, which is obviously in the market right now if you've driven by. Obviously, it's not of any value until the utilities are brought to the lot and they understand that, but there is future value there.
How far away the utilities?
There's actually utilities that are near the intersection of 10th Street, which is just to the north of that, and actually the standard property right at the edge of city limits. We put up a map here. Standard property is located here, and there's actually a sewer line that's extended just for that home in that area. Then the water line actually runs in the boulevard across street. But at this point, because those would not be of any value from a public improvement standpoint or future development, I've been talking to the city engineer and public works and utilities, there's no desire to extend those at this point until the lines come from Central and kind of make the loop back over to First. So that's why all that's being delayed until future development, which is what the development agreement also gets into a little more detail on, future costs for their connection to the utilities and those types of things.
Well, it won't have utilities for a couple of years, is that what you're saying?
It'll take as long as it takes for this additional outlot land to be brought in for preliminary and final plating. So it could be one year, it could be 10 years. We don't quite know. But for the purposes of the one home, there's no value in spending upwards of about $50,000 just to get utilities going.
So you're saying the existing homes for sale, but are they selling the lot next to it with it, since that's where the septic is?
Nope. So they are having, again, the development agreement, we'll get into this on the next item. The Lot 1, which is the home that's for sale, has the encumbrance in its favor over Lot 2 that has the mound system on it. So in effect, makes Lot 2 worth nothing until city utilities are brought to that lot. But that's what the applicant is looking to do with that at this point. There's future value there.
Who has the authority to say when utilities would be brought to that lot?
Just when the further development of the outlots on Tokolski Estates are planted.
Okay, it's not the homeowner, because if the homeowner owns the, you know, someone buys a house and wants to say, "I never want utilities."
Oh, no, they have to connect. That's what the development agreement actually specifies.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, anyone from the two callers about this? If not? I guess I'll make a motion to pass the, approve the resolution for granting approval of the final plat.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
Got a second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes 4-0. Okay, letter D.
Letter D of the Tokolski Estates items here. So this is a development agreement item that will review this agenda item. Obviously, we've looked at the annexation, we've looked at the rezoning, and we've looked at the plat. So this item gets specifically into the details of the utilities and this easement over Lot 1. So I'll first go over, this is actually exhibit to the development agreement, specific to property 1, which is the lot with the house, is basically the benefited property. And that easement covers all of Lot 2, and that's what's determined in the agreement as the burden property for both the septic and the well. So like I said, it basically makes Lot 2 unusable and really of no value until utilities brought into the lot. Those items are covered specifically on page 2 under 4A and B of the development agreement, where it talks about the restrictions, and this is just the visual version of that bullet point. The other items to point out in this development agreement are item number 3 on page 2, which covers that for these two lots that are being planted, they are required to pay a park dedication fee of about $1,085.58, which is due and owed at the time of, before we'll sign the plat. And future land plating will require more land dedication at that point, but this is just for these two lots being planted. And then on page 1, under item number 2, the final items that are addressed are the future trunk charges and connection charges for the connection of these lots, and obviously future lots on Outlet A and B when those should be developed. And this just notes that when there's no exact timeline for future water and sewer to be brought to this property that is being annexed, it basically says that the pace at which that happens is dependent upon the surrounding development. And it says that the acknowledgement of the developer is that once city water and sewer are made available to the lots within the developments, specifically these two lots that we're looking at here tonight, those lots are then required to connect to and pay the then current connection charges. So Chuck, hopefully that covers your question about are they required to hook up? Yes, they are. This says they specifically are, and we'll have to pay their connection fees that are charged at the time when that occurs. So we didn't put a dollar amount in, because it could be five years from now, and we don't know what we would be charging at that time.
What's the existing charges would be?
Right now, the existing charges to hook up a single-family home would be $7,150 for connecting to sewer, and then $1,800 to connect to water.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anyone have any questions? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the subdivision agreement.
I'll move.
Motion by Maggie Bass.
Second.
Second by Bruce Wolf. There's no other questions or comments? We'll take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Sorry.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye.
I'm not finding a match in your contacts. Tell me just the first name.
Is that Alexis or something?
That's how you fix technology, you shut it off.
Hit it with a hammer.
It passes 4-0. Okay, sorry about that. Next, uh, number nine. It looks like this would be the second reading of the rezoning ordinance.
Yes, so number nine is the 土地地第一版, proposed by Marvin Deutsch. Council introduced the ordinance at the September 8th, 2020 council meeting. And this would bring the property that's outlined in yellow here, where we had talked that Mr. Deutsch was proposing to put up a approximately 43-unit apartment building. And the rezoning would move this property from its currently designated B2 community commercial to the RH, high-density residential, which is obviously matching the property to the south and the same zoning as Praha Village on the west end of the block. So staff is recommending the adoption of the ordinance to occur tonight for the rezoning.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
I'll move.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Seiler to approve the second reading and adopt the rezoning ordinance, and I will second that. So if there's no other questions or comments, we can take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes 4-0. Moving right along. We have a variance request.
We do. I'll get another PowerPoint loaded up here.
You must've been busy with all the PowerPoints.
Easy when I just pared on what I did at planning commission. All right. Next item, variance V9, 2020, is a fence height variance along 11th Avenue Northwest in Raven Stream Village Development. The applicant tonight is Richard Shane Bauer, and we'll get into the summary. So Mr. Shane Bauer lives at 1205 Grant Avenue. So his backyard plots 11th Avenue Northwest, and he is requesting a six-foot-tall privacy fence within that 30 feet of the right-of-way of 11th Avenue, which would exceed our ordinance limit of four feet tall within 30 feet of a road right-of-way. He would like that fence installed for a couple of reasons. In no particular order, for a pet to be contained, for privacy reasons. 11th Avenue Northwest is a collector road and carries a little over 800 vehicles a day at this point. And that is only expected to grow as Raven Stream Village develops and as further traffic generated. And then obviously, the last reason is it's about 21% of his lot that he would not be able to have enclosed with the six-foot-tall fence. So he'd like to have greater use of his lot. The fence type that's proposed is very similar to the two other homes that were issued variances further to the west on, that back up at 6th Street Northwest. They're wooden-type privacy fences. This one in particular is a dog ear picket style. And the planning commission reviewed this at our meeting on September 16th. We did not have any public comments received, and it was recommended to move forward to council tonight here with a 3 to 0 vote for approval. Outline in red is Mr. Shane Bauer's lot. The reason you don't see the home on the air photo is because the home was very recently built, and that is why he's obviously wanting to be fenced in as soon as he can, but is a very new home. Let me see, 11th Avenue along the rear side of the home. The two other homes that we actually issued variances for in the past couple of years was the two homes you can see right on the edge of the air photo here. And we'll look at the photos, and you can actually see those fences in those areas there specifically.
Hey, Ken, how far is the fence going to? Is it going just to the edge of the house, or?
Yeah, he's actually going to follow the ordinance on coming off the back corner of the garage, if you can see here. And then on the non-gard side, he's just going to go right to the back edge of the home. He's not seeking for anything except to get within that 30 feet of the road right-of-way. One thing to point out here, which is a little different than the other fence variances we've looked at, is he actually has a sidewalk adjacent to his rear lot line along 11th Avenue. We do have an ordinance requirement that there has to be a two-foot clear zone from the edge of that trail. So you have the sidewalk, and then one foot in from that is where his rear lot line is. He's actually required to have his fence in an additional foot for that two-foot clear zone to be met. So he is okay with that. So I just want to point out, he's not able to build it right up to his lot line. It's going to be actually one foot in his lot line for a total of two feet from the edge of the sidewalk to meet that clear zone, so in total.
Just on that side of the fence?
Sorry, you didn't catch that, Chuck?
Just on 11th?
Just on 11th, correct.
There's no sidewalk on 6th?
There is no sidewalk on 6th, that is correct. So that is the one unique part about this lot, that there is a sidewalk there. We haven't had to deal with that in these fence variances before, but I did recommend that they maintain that clear zone area, and he is okay with that. Um, so.
So the red line and the green line are all six-foot fence?
Yes, he's looking to put his six-foot fence, if you kind of follow where I'm tracing here, all the way up in two feet of the trail here. So six foot, this is kind of the limit of it. If we did not grant the variance, he'd have to stop his fence 30 feet short of that rear lot line, and this would be the extent of his six-foot-tall fence, if not granted the variance.
Is that, Ken, is that the land right across from it, is that our industrial parkland?
No.
Or is that still, that's west of our land?
So the industrial parkland would be further to the west here, oh, to the east, sorry, Chuck.
Okay.
Yep, so these townhomes.
I just saw stub out there, and I was just wondering if that's.
Yeah, this is still residential property through here. So we'll get into the photo.
Are any of the fences that we've already approved, are any of them that long? I mean, that's a lot of footage of six-foot fence.
Yeah, this one has a bit more frontage along 6th Street, or 11th Avenue, excuse me, which is obviously one of the main reasons that he's wanting to have that privacy. So no, to answer your question, Rick, this is a much wider extent, I guess you would say, from a visual standpoint. And you can see in this photo here, he actually had put fence posts up, fence posts up and stopped at the 30-foot setback line, so you can kind of visualize that's how much farther back it would be, just for a visual. And it does cover a big area of frontage along 11th Avenue.
It looks horrible, too. It's going to look horrible.
So the other.
That one that you see back there, yeah, that one.
The other fence is off to the west on 6th Street there. These fences are about 16 feet off the right-of-way of 6th Avenue. these fences are about 16 feet off the right-of-way of Sixth Avenue. Again, no sidewalk there, whereas this one is proposed to be about 19 feet. So it's actually further away from the right-of-way, or the edge of the road than these are from Sixth Street. But you do have the sidewalk there, so I do want to point that out. But it is actually further away from the road than these fences are. And then finally here, the yellow flags kind of indicate the two-foot setback approximately where that clear zone has to be met. So you're not hugging the sidewalk.
I want to hear the rest of the council, but I wish we went to started doing that in the first place. I mean, that is a lot of six-foot fence. That looks horrible, I think.
I was going to say the staff recommend, do recommend approval of the resolution approving the variance. Back to the drawing here.
And there were no public comments, right?
There were no public comments or concerns in it.
So none of the neighbors at this point has complained or have concerned about the fence?
No.
Is that the fence in that one picture looking along 6th, is that the fence that went all the way to the front of the garage?
That is, yes. You can kind of see in the background. Screen up, hold on.
I just was trying to...
This one here, Chuck, yeah, that went up to the front edge of the home, which is a little, not what they're asking for here.
No, no, no. Just trying to... Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments? Okay. If there is no question or comments, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the resolution approving the variance.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie Bass. There's no other questions or comments. Take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
No.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so it passes 3-1. Ken, you can take a break now. I think it's Jim's turn. We're up to item 11, COVID update. If there's much change or anything, Jim?
There's not a lot of change at all, although staff has been working to look at opening up City Hall. We are anticipating that we'll do that on the 28th. Again, this is kind of baby steps. We would open up first-floor area, the commons area, the hallway through it, so that customers could be serviced. We have a cleaning plan in place for that, along with, we'll put out additional masks and cleaning stations to be able to offer, at least behind glass, customer service at the windows then. Again, I talk about small steps because we're not opening it up to letting groups rent it for meetings or anything yet, until we... Ken has been working diligently on our technology to get that put in place before we're able to bring more people in. We have been changing the way we are doing our training. I know we, just a couple of weeks ago, we did first responder training for the police department, and I held that over in the fire hall, just so that we could spread out and social distance better for that in-classroom training. But again, we're in good shape for cleaning supplies and PPEs. We'll offer disposable masks for those that come and just have our signage out that masks are required and that we ask that they stay social distance. We'll put some markings down on the floor right now. We're anticipating just to use tape right now, blue tape, for our X's for markings to see how long-term this is going to go. I know in speaking with Glenn, he talked about he didn't really want to put down stickers that might have a little more adhesive that will be difficult to pull off if we end up ever pulling them off. So for now, we're just going to use some of that, and we'll print off signage through the governor's website and put in our own details for City Hall buildings or New Prague buildings, public buildings, and go from there. But yeah, we are anticipating possibly next Monday to do that.
Okay.
Again, we have not had any complaints at all from any customers, whether it's on police side, administrative side, planning and zoning, or utilities, of anybody having issues with not being able to get their needs met through other means anyways.
And Jim, can you give me a quick, or give us a quick update on how did Nozinki go with the Wednesday-Thursday activities in the park?
Went very well. Talked to Brooke after each of those events, and she was a little disappointed with the turnout on Thursday. Numbers were down a little bit. But two of the three food stands said they were happy with it. One of them just indicated that, on that night anyways, on Thursday, the numbers were down, that it really didn't pay for her to come out with her stand. But overall, Brooke said it was real positive. I know the officers that worked it enjoyed being down there and seeing the people, but overall, it worked out real well. Over the weekend, we didn't have any issues or concerns. An officer made contact with one bar where masks weren't really being utilized within the premises. So he spoke to the bartenders that were working at the time. But otherwise, the other bars handled themselves nicely. The crowds were semi-minimal. We got one complaint about the noise from the band being outside, but overall, it went real well. I did just email out just our Dozinki Weekend stat comparison, which obviously numbers were down, but you can take a look at that. If you have any questions, you can just give me a call. But as for COVID-19, I think that's about it for now.
Okay. Anyone else in the council have a question for Jim? Go ahead, Bruce.
Jim, you mentioned opening a City Hall. I thought that at times, City Hall allowed public meetings in the building. But you're not opening it up to the public for meeting space or anything like that, are you, or?
No, no, we, like I said, we're going to take small steps on that, but we wouldn't allow meeting rooms to be reserved and open to public meetings right now. Even, even opening up to customers, we will probably limit that to the first-floor area down through the hallway where they can get to the service windows. But even upstairs will be very limited to only those that need to go up there. And part of that is just part of our cleaning process. We have cleaning personnel that come in in the evening to do the deep cleaning. Other than that, employees will be doing some of the touchpoints throughout the day, but we don't have a lot of employees to just continually clean all the time. So that's why it's going to be limited. And during, during the day, some of the fountains may be shut down to use or posted with some sort of sign that indicates these are cleaned once at night. Otherwise, they are not cleaned, you know, throughout the day. So part of that signage is what we have to put in place also, even, even to the degree that the bathrooms are marked with our, kind of our cleaning schedule for that.
Okay.
Are you going to, are you going to have both the combination of online or the computer stuff for like the staff and just have the council in here? Is that how you're going to do that, or how are you going to do that one?
Once we start our meetings, our technology would allow, well, depending, I mean, if, if social distancing goes away and things, we could have council there. But I think ultimately, the reason why we're looking to get in this video process, the necessity of it is people may not be comfortable coming to public meetings in person anyways, so we'll have to be able to offer both options at the same time. And that's, that's why it's important to integrate the technologies together so that we can do that somewhat seamlessly with the audio and the video feeds that come in. You guys have to be able to see everything on the screen, and people at home have to be able to see you also. So it's kind of marrying all those things together, and that's where the technology comes in.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments for Jim? Okay, Jim, thank you very much for the update.
No problem, and I would ask next time, maybe Mike could put me at the top of the thing rather than having COVID at the end of every meeting.
No.
Well, that's something you have to work out with him.
It's not happening.
Next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments, claims of payment, or any questions at all on anything on the consent agenda?
This is Maggie. I just want to note that this special city council meeting on Monday, September 8, I was not present, so I can't indicate if the, the meeting minutes are accurate or not.
Oh, you don't trust us, do you, Meg? Anything else? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I already tried that twice.
Well, did you? I didn't hear you, okay. Rick made a motion to approve the consent agenda, and I will second it. How's that? If there's no other comments, we'll take a roll call vote. Maggie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Bruce?
Aye.
And Chuck says aye, so that passes 4-0. We're at the miscellaneous. Jim, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. Ken?
The only thing I was going to bring up, Chuck, you got the email, I don't know if any of the council members did. We had a insert about a particular political sign on a garage near St. Wentz with a profane word on it. Actually, I had a number of phone calls on this today, and Chuck, you had the one email at least. And so this profanity on the, I won't even repeat it, but I talked to Scott Riggs just before the meeting tonight here and wanted to note that there really is no law against a profanity on a sign, particularly a political sign in this case, even though it's right across the street from the school and the church. And it would not be considered obscene either, but certainly is in poor taste, but there's nothing illegal about it. So I just wanted to make that known, and I'll have a few phone calls to make tomorrow on people that had, very likely were dropping off children this morning in St. Wentz and saw the sign, but it's still there, and we can't make them take it down, so.
I don't even know how they saw that. It's way back in, on the top of his garage, in the back.
I didn't see it when I drove by a couple of times, and then I went back, and there it was.
Yeah.
Oh, I just wanted to bring that to the council's attention if you get any calls on it, because there could be others that pop up out there. Scott said there was a few other cities they've dealt with that had the same question, so.
Probably the same sign.
And I did email Norm back, Ken, and explain that to him, so.
You will do that, Chuck?
I did that already.
Oh, you did? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I did email Norm back and explain to him that there's not anything we really could do about it because it wasn't considered obscene and that, but I don't know if he's responded to it. I did that just before I left work, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you for the update. Thanks for your help on that.
Yep, that's all I got.
Patrick, you got anything?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, Barb? No, okay, Mike?
No, I think we filled up your agenda plenty tonight.
Okay. Maggie, do you have any miscellaneous items you want to bring up?
No, I don't.
Rick? Okay, Bruce?
Just one item. I know that Scott Coney is coming out with a CARES Act grant program for rental assistance and mortgage payments. Is there any way you can help promote that in town? That's just obviously for Scott Coney's side, but do we have an email list of tenants or landlords?
We do have a list of landlords, yes.
Email list?
Yes.
Is that possible? We could forward that?
Yeah, we could, definitely.
Promotion to them, at least to give them an effort. It's, it's coming kind of late in the game, and I don't know if people are really aware of it at all, and it's a very tight application timeline, so.
We definitely can do that. I haven't, I guess I haven't seen that program details yet or a link. Is there a link or something?
Yeah, go on to League of Minnesota Cities is where I seen it.
And I've got it.
I thought it was emailed to us at the city council.
It just came out last week. I've got it, Ken.
Okay, yep, we can get that out.
Okay.
I don't think Leesur County has anything comparable to that. I think so. It's just Scott Coney people, but...
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, and I don't have anything else. So before we adjourn, remember, Mike, you want to just do it immediately after we adjourn? Do people log back into the HRA meeting?
Yeah. Give a couple of minutes, and then people have to log back in on that agenda, and we should be able to get through that pretty quickly.
Okay, sounds good. I will make a motion to adjourn. Second by Rick Seiler. I think we'll just do a call vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? All right, everyone, thank you very much. The HRA, the council, please sign back in immediately, and we can get done with that very quick. Thank you very much.